... Here I am, eating. First of all, I want to brag a little. Everyone gets excited by different things. Many people in Israel get excited by like, "You shiurim," "You program," everything. I actually am really excited about these dividers. As someone who's spent his life doing programs, this is why I want to do other things. I know what it is to have a contained space to be able to speak. So I want to thank, I think, the Rabb, the whole crew. It turns out from the time we built this building, from the time we put the dividers in, the divider company went out of business. So I don't know exactly how. I know that there were multiple countries involved. I know that there were wrong callers, wood sent over, sent back. It was, it looks a lot, lot similar than it was. So I'd like to thank the whole operations crew, especially the Vigner, for putting these things up. And also, I want all of you, everyone that runs the program, to just know that we have this ability now to easily divide this room up into three to do that. I also want to thank the Vigner. You know, we go through all kinds of things you may not realize. One of the great things that has happened to us is the expansion of Geshur. Geshur has gotten tremendously bigger. So one of the things that we had to do is we had to increase dormitory space for the boys from, for Geshur. So we took the old base menagerie and we're putting another floor in to double the amount of space the kids could sleep there. So I came back yesterday and all of a sudden I heard Derek Agav in a meeting that, "Oh yeah, you know, the day we started construction, the Archaeological Authority came in and gave us a stop work order on any of the work we're doing there." So I said, "How come no one told me?" So the Vigner says, "Ah, we kept working, don't worry about it." We've been back for years. So I want to, again, thank all the operators for all the things you don't tell me. I don't really want to know ever. I also want to welcome our close friends here, Stuart and Andrea Heitman. We're here. Beautiful wedding last night to many of us attendees. I saw Stuart last night and I said, "Oh, you're here till Thursday, you want to come by?" Saturday he says, "No, tomorrow is Andrea's birthday today. Tomorrow, we're really gonna take the day off." And next thing I know, we were, "What's happening?" And he said, "Oh, maybe we'll come by anyway." So thank you for coming here. But not only that, since it is Andrea's birthday, we got a little bit of a cake. I want to wish Andrea happy birthday from all of us.
(Singing) Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Andrea. Happy birthday to you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Also, just personally, I'd like to thank Stuart and Andrea. Last time Stuart was here, he spoke. Last time, actually, I think, one of the most powerful speeches to be given in the base menagerie, when Stuart spoke in the base menagerie, he talked about being in H without Andrea and learning our anniversary, and how Andrea really supported him and sent him. And just, you know, in terms of your general support, but also your Yiddish kite support, being role models for us, thank you very much for everything that you do for us. We have a lot to go through today, a whole bunch of stuff, so I just want to get going. But one of the things I talk to you a lot about is the fact that we're opening the first new branch since 2009. The last branch, I think, if I'm correct, if I'm wrong, was Mexico in 2009. It's only fitting that the next branch is also sort of Spanish-speaking, but sort of in America, a little bit of a hybrid of everything. So last, it started with an email that was sent to someone. We moved on, we spoke to people, we schmoozed with people. Last, we shnehem piper, we sent rabbis down, we rented out a local hotel. And now, we're ready, this Russian piper, to actually have a robi community and to move forward on a building project in Carmel Valley, right near San Diego. And I want to ask Rabbi Mayor Rosenberg, who has worked tirelessly on building this and many other Spanish-speaking efforts to compose.
It was really, it's an amazing story, an amazing story because of this. A year ago, when I just was, I was very new in my topic in Jerusalem, Rabbi Stev called me and said, "Listen there, there's a group of Mexicans coming to the building. They want to know more about H. Can you meet with them?" So I said, "Of course, I'm not with them." So I went to the lobby, and there were four or five guys. So I was talking with them, I told them about what H is about, and you can have small background, talk about the building. And they were sitting with Rabbi Berg in his office, and they say, "Listen, we're interested, we're gonna open an H branch." So I was like, "Great, but where is this coming from? Are you connected to it, do you know anything about it?" But online, they didn't know anything about H. No connection with any H rabbi, no connection with anything, no programs, no nothing. They heard about Mexico, but I didn't know that much. But I told you, there's one thing we really know. We know that we are afraid that our kids are gonna end up intermarrying. This is a community of 700 families of Mexicans that moved in the last 15 years to San Diego. And they told us, like, in Mexico, the communities are very strong. Everybody's Shaiyat to the community, 97% of the H, everybody's Shaiyat to something. Now, in America, we move here, and we see that here, the situation is completely different. We're so afraid, our kids are meeting non-Jews from earlier ages. They're moving to different colleges. There's so many interactions with non-Jewish people that we're really afraid that we'll end up assimilating, we're intermarrying, and we're gonna do something, we're gonna take responsibility and do something to prevent that. So we asked people, "What we can do?" And people direct us to H. So here we are, we don't know nothing about you, but we're gonna open an H branch, we're gonna stop this problem, we're gonna take a price for our kids, and we'll do something together with you. So from the beginning, it was like a perfect chilo. It was an amazing group of people. I met with them a few times in Jerusalem. And then I went to San Diego for the first time. I spent 12 hours with them, they told me around the place, and they did a big meeting at night. They invited, like, all the important people of the Mexican community there. And I presented what I think is the best model for them to start an H branch. And at the end of the meeting, like, everybody was super excited. They wanted to vote, so they voted, and it was a nice thing. Everybody was like, "Yeah, we're gonna do it." So we committed to two things. First thing was, they need to create a board with people who found the project, who gave the funds for the project, and would be really very willing from their side to build the whole program, to go through the years with the problem helping. And from my side, they committed to find a rabbi. So they did an amazing job. They put together a board of people that's really, each one extends families. Each one of them is really a beautiful family, a managed people. It's a pleasure to work with them, to be with them. I always took the rabbis, they came with me, and it's really an amazing group of people. The other side was, find a rabbi, which was not so easy, because there were a lot of requirements that are not so fashionable to get. They wanted a rabbi who's Latino, because they want a sense of Latin American community. But same time, it's just the English, because in America, in America, you need to, like, of course, you know, people not always Spanish, so they don't know so the branch. Same time, they want someone who understands the ethnicity and spirit of communities, because there are mixed communities, and they need to involve. They want someone who's experienced, not just a smicha guy who under the smicha throne right now. And above that, they want also someone ideally with a green card or something similar, so he can go there. It's not so fashionable to bring Latinos to America. So it was not fashionable. By all accounts, we got a few candidates. And at the end, with a lot of C S D isma', we ended up not hiring only a rabbi who fits all those criteria. Besides that, also, we needed someone who is H, connected to H, or from H, or reconnected and knows us from years and non-talents. And is a loyal representative of our values and our ideologies throughout this. So at the end, we ended up not only finding a good rabbi that fits all those criteria, we ended up hiring a rabbi who happens to be one of the best Q rabbis in Latin America. And I want all you to meet and to welcome our friend, new rabbi in H, San Diego, coming to work.
All right, David Scary, I don't know about being a Q rabbi or... I'm sure you speak Spanish. I mean, that's my English. Yeah, so that's my story. Let me introduce myself very briefly. I was born in Mexico. My father is a rabbi. I am really sorry, I know in H it is not good, but I am an F A P. Sorry, guys. You're gonna have to tell me as I am. And not only that, even worse, my wife is also an F A P, but she's also from Brooklyn, New York, so that just ruins everything. Her last name is Berger. But don't worry, she's not related to me.
Believe me, I have a P also.
Have you answered? Oh, at least one, too. So that's another story. I went to Bar Hashem. I learned my English by going, when I was 15 years old, to Nuremberg, Baltimore. So I am at least a friend of Rabbi Jacob Reitberg, the brother of Rabb Noyah. And the sister to be, Elvadera, fantastic yeshiva. When I was gathered, I didn't speak two words of English. Me not speaking English was it. And well, I mean, I do have a big accent, you know, but whatever. I can speak. Then I went to Coltura for a few years. And when I was in Coltura, so I gathered a small group of guys from Coltura, believe it or not. And from all of yeshivas in Beis Ba'gah, and then we contacted Rav Moshe Zeldman. And we, you know, H has always been the place that most people do it. You know that. If there's anybody in the world who knows how to transmit a message of Yiddish kite to those who doesn't have the opportunity to have it from birth, that's you. And we grew up, I grew up, when I started getting into Qeruf in a camp in Baltimore, by Rav Moshe Zeller. We grew up thinking that H really does it best, and I wanted to learn more of how to do it. So I contacted him, and we started, we used to come once a week, and I learned. We eventually even met with Rabb Noyah, et cetera, and so on. I ended up doing my smicha, my vayyam, smicha vedat, by Rabbi Joseph, my son of David Joseph, Lev de Benachaim Ha'chaim. And, but believe me, judging people is not, it's not fun. It's not a good idea. I don't know if you have ever sat in Beijing as a dyan, and it's really not good. So if you ask me, it's a very, I think it's better to give preventive medicine and to teach people how to live their life right, so that you don't have to end up divorcing them or whatever, trying to fix their problems, et cetera. Let's just do it right from the beginning, and that's really my motivation. And so, for the last 11 years, I've been in Mexico, in the Sephardi community in Mexico, which is really a sacred or community, although archetypes. And I was in charge of Jewish education. And, well, not in the opportunity to go to San Diego, California, which has terrible weather of like 75 degrees all year long. Yes, you're suffering terribly. And nothing much is Yerushalayim. So you guys, nobody should be jealous at all, because I would be anything up to be able to move back here any day. Maybe Stev is listening. You know, you have also, people speak Spanish here, I'll do something. And it was not a shame, we're very excited. I flew to New York to meet Rabbi Stev. And I was just, you know, walking on the airport, and I saw these stores that sell clothing, pantsy stores, I bought, and I don't know what, or money. And I was just thinking, like, who the heck comes shopping to the airport? And 10 minutes later, I spilled my coffee all over my shirt. And I'm thinking, I'm going to meet the CEO of Yeshiva, I was so scared. I'm still scared. And so, there I go, shopping for my... They have white shirts, by the way. They have one, but they have white shirts. And I sold to buy one, and I meet him, and somehow, through Rabbi Mayor, we, Bar Hashem, were able to do it. I'm just very excited to be a part of the H family, and very excited to be part of this fantastic project of bringing Yiddish kite to those who need it most. And it's not a shame, we really hope that together, because everything is just together, and with the help of Rav Badeh Croco, we'll be able to really bring light to the farthest corner of the earth, of America, at least. It's a corner in America, and it's far. It's not a shame, we should be able to do that. And thank you all very much for the opportunity to be a part of this.
Okay, with our luck, you know, we've talked a lot about the missions and trips, a lot of things that were to be passing people through this building. So one of the people that was really responsible for both ways, I mean, this building, thank God, the amount of usage we've had, is just going up and up and up. Even putting in these dividers was enabling us to do, have more groups, have more people, have the operations, everything functioning. And Rabbi Yossi really took on the responsibility. And I want to ask Yossi Friedman to come up and talk a little bit about everything he's doing, and also especially the mission for overall community.
About those dividers. I just, the truth is that I waited to really speak to one of these panel meetings when I actually had something to say. And I feel that there's a lot, there's a lot to talk about. Just to mention something that, that I sort of, that was exciting me, not only on the nimmsho that was meant to point out, but on, you know, extrapolated to things that we're doing here in H is, you know, there's a sefer Chavas Adon Bo'elama, there's a set of svarum. And it's written by Rabbi Anonymous, who has haskamas from every, all the big bale musa of the generation. And in there, he writes, he's speaking about the tafket of a person in this, like the Chavas Adon Bo'elama. So he thinks that if you don't know what your tafket is in this world, so, for example, if you're on the wrong train, it doesn't help to change seats on the train, right? If you're supposed to head to Florida, and you're heading, you know, to Toronto, you just gotta get off the train. And so, you know, he spoke, actually speaks about the finding your tafket. And in there, he brings a mashlo about a doctor who was given the responsibility of taking the intensive care unit overnight as the lone doctor. There was shortage of doctors, there was a strike, maybe it was in Israel. And they, and they said to him, "Listen, hopefully, it'll be an easy night, and you'll, you know, you'll be able to get through it. But if it becomes crazy, and all the patients start screaming at once, so here's the number to call, and we're gonna send backup." So the night starts off okay, and then all of a sudden, it all starts caving, and then all the patients start going crazy at once. And he's running back and forth, and back and forth, like a meshugana, back and forth. And he comes to one bed late after a call, and the person passed away. So the family sues him in court. And they said to him, "You're responsible for the death of our relative." So he comes to court, and he says to the judge, "Judge, I don't even understand what these guys are talking about. Do you know how with Messirus Navish, I ran bed to bed and was making myself crazy all my..." I would have had to have been a malach to save this guy's life. And the judge says to him, "Fool, all you had to do was call the number. That was your tafket. Your tafket wasn't to run around like a meshugana and make yourself crazy, you know, to allow the person to die. All you had to do was follow instructions and call the phone number." So there's nimmshos, obviously, that, if we think our tafket is to do mitzvahs, so when it comes to shemaim, and the judge is gonna say to us, "Fool, you did a great job, and you're a messiah of the mitzvah." But that wasn't what the tafket was. The tafket was to call the phone number. So I feel like here in H, from everything we've been doing operationally, we're that 800 number. You know, we're trying to facilitate everyone else doing their jobs, making life easier than everybody else. And I think that those who have tapped into it, it has made their life easier, more efficient, using the manpower that we have. And I feel that trying to give over the message that we're here to help, I'm here to help in every way, as well as the entire team, to try to ease a lot of the stress and a lot of the inefficiencies sometimes because of being messy and effort, to be able to make that easier, that's just as an introduction. In terms of specifically, I overheard a conversation that disturbed me greatly. They were saying, "I'm gonna try to make this vague, so that we don't identify people here." But someone in the building met someone else, and said, and was explaining an H program that was going on. And the recipient was like, "Wow, that is amazing. I know somebody who could join that program. How do I get them signed up?" They said, "Oh, that's easy. You go to h.com/abc/124 dot A S P backslash six." Right? That guy was not ending up on any H program anytime soon. And it became clear to me that we have so much going on here in Yerushalayim itself, it's just not as easily accessible as it should be. So we created a page, which is already live, which is called hjerusalem.com. Isn't that obvious? Where basically, on that page is everything that's going on in Yerushalayim. It's one click away from signing up, basically, anything that's going on here in Yerushalayim. You have Essentials, you have Israel, you have Geshur, you have Yeshiva, you have the Western Old experience, you have all types of things that we do day in and day out. And it's all accessible. So instead of having to memorize a chapter of a book, all you need to do is be able to tell people to go to hjerusalem.com, and it's easily accessible for all these programs. To that extent, I wanted also to thank Rav Ha'Plethnik, who was here for the wedding last night, who was very instrumental in getting that done, as well as other projects, and roaring through the process of bureaucracy to get that done in an efficient manner. So thank you. Another thing that we've done, which is really very exciting, which is, H Yerushalayim for many years, I know that Eric has been very instrumental in keeping that afloat, is the one-on-one program. And students, basically, who have gone to H were signed up, and it was meant to, but it was a little bit of a lone wolf. Not that much support, certainly not that much money, you know, to go through the process. And basically, we've taken the H Torah one-on-one program, and we've merged it with the Project Inspire one-on-one program, which essentially would allow students to be paired up with Project Inspire mentors in America, thereby, just rewind. Partners in Torah in general is really a matchmaking process. They recruit the frum, they recruit the non-frum, and they match them up. We have that built in. Project Inspire is recruiting from H Jerusalem, is getting non-frum through the building. So all we have to do is just put the pieces together. We don't even have to do the whole recruitment process. And by doing that, we've combined manpower, we've combined resources. It's not really costing H Torah more money, it's not really costing Project Inspire more money. And essentially, we were able to be double as efficient, double as productive, working coordination with Stuart Schwartz, with Esther Katz, with Mayor Rosenberg, getting students that are coming into the building signed up in an efficient way. So that's a very exciting program, and I'll certainly be updating you as we start to get the thousands and thousands of matches that we hope to get. In addition, I know that many of you have complained about this in the past, which is the technology in floors four and five, in the rickless and barren room. Sometimes, a group can wait 15, 20 minutes in order for it to get set up, because, mostly because the system is old, and it's just really not up to par anymore. So we've actually contracted a company to put in. We're actually just stuck at one point, which is similar to the dividers company going out of business before we got the dividers. The sealing company went on vacation before we were able to put in the proper systems there. But in the next week or two, we should be getting the, we should be getting the technology up there so that by a push of button, you'll really be able to access and be able to teach in an easier way. And hopefully, that'll be up and running very soon.
You have smart boards?
No.
Not so?
No. Smarter than boards. Your stender is your smart board. As you're telling.
Really?
Yep. Smart stenders, right. Creating here, right. So smart stenders are on the way. Rabbi Berg mentioned missions. We're starting H Yerushalayim missions that are gonna be able to service our branches in a very, in an educational way, in an H educational way, in the near future. Obviously, working together with our partners at Go Inspire, and creating a trip that works on an H level and is efficiently run by Go Inspire. Our first trip that we are running, which is a niche for and a need for, was an advanced men's mission, which is happening this November. We have many men who have gone on J D R P trips, who have been involved in the various H branches. We call it like a, not a level two, but like a level one and a half. Many people that have kind of been, have done that on the, on the, you know, they've seen, they've seen the basic sites in Israel, now they really want to zero and a lot more in the Judaism. And November 13 through the 20th, we're running our first, we'll call it recharge men's mission. So Atolman is sending, Tvi Sidro is sending guys, Ari Markman, and other branches that we've been in touch with. Dr. David Kaseen, Dr. Ian Took, 10 slots under the recharge men's mission for non-frum. No, not non-frum Kaseen. I saw the cleaving, I'm surprised.
But they were...
No, it's not right. Those aren't Essentials. Or really being able to service all the people that we've inspired them to do outreach, as well as branches who have been doing it for so long, to be able to give them different access and abilities to use H Yerushalayim. The final thing is, in general, and I didn't afford it for you guys to know this, because it really comes through the lines a lot, which is, the feedback from trips who have been here over the last couple of months has been off the charts. I know that in the past, you know, sometimes, you know, but I just say, just to put it back, the amount of gifts that have been bought for the operations office by groups that have come in is astounding. Bradley, we could barely wake him up in the morning from all the drinking. But it's really, it's really...
He wasn't giving any alcohol, a gift, right?
One bottle, one bottle.
But it's really, it's really been amazing. And the level of service, the food service, the kitchen, you know, the chef and the kitchen staff has really gone out of the way. The entire operations staff has really been very special to make it happen. I think that it's important for everyone to know, because it reflects on the organization as a whole. People don't differentiate, "Oh, that rabbi is really good, but this guy, it's his fault." They just relate to an organization as being good, or forget about it, like, let's ride and walk. And I think that we're back in business in that level of people, and it's only going up from here. People are really very, very satisfied overall, and we hope to really keep that up. That's all the news for the friend on my end, and I'm available anytime if anybody needs anything on that.
That's true, anytime.
In the spirit of making Kevah, making Torah, I want to shift over to Yeshiva, because one of the things that happened over the years is the buildings, even though we're attached on the third floor, sometimes they drift apart. And we spent a lot of time working with Yeshiva, with Essentials, with all the program, to make sure that there's great coordination with Yeshiva. And I wanted to ask Rabbi Rosman, if he could come up and talk a little bit about this and assess.
Okay, just a few points to, like, to speak about what's been happening over the last few months, last couple of months, four points specifically. One, as some of you already seen, and many of you have actively been helpful with this, let's thank everyone, regarding this upcoming sammish program. Bar Hashem will be starting in Elo. There's been a lot of advertising, and already, the momentum has begun, where Schoolmaker, Reizman have already gone, meeting and interviewing potential candidates, participants for the upcoming program. There's a lot of hype, there's a lot of buzz, pretty bad in Masul, other areas. And it's clear to everyone here, was handing signs up, meeting out with people, contacting people. But by the time, we're looking forward to a very exciting program to start. We have some Spanish-speaking candidates, we have some Israel...
Excel, right.
What?
Excel, right.
Excel, yeah, okay. We have some of the, it should be Kaufman, and EPL's Kohl, who might be joining to enhance the Israel. Kiruv, we have people that were inborn from H Torah that are gonna be continuing in the program. And by the time, we're gonna be bringing in five to seven outside participants, English-speaking also, that helps, we're very excited. And anyone who wants to be able to help more, please become a Schoolmaker. He's been ready to be most necessary tremendously to make this get this far. And we're very excited for the beginning. The second change, or change that has happened, is a program called Essentials Advanced. Basically, after Essentials, now students come, after their two weeks in Essentials, they come to Yeshiva. And together with Rabbi Schwartz and Rabbi Elsant, they've been working very, very hard at creating this program, which has begun, many of you have commented already. They walk into the base menagerie at 2 o'clock, and the place is buzzing with people without kippahs. That's, that's the Essentials Advanced program. Bar Hashem is very, very well structured, there's a lot of learning going on. The students feel part of Yeshiva, they're very excited about the learning, very excited about the experience that they're having, they feel very connected, as yesterday, we had a trip. And they're part of Yeshiva, they feel like they want to continue and learn to learn more. It's been big, Rabbi Schwartz and Rabbi Elsant for really bringing this forward in very, very quick and efficient manner. The third area, which has been a big point of the summer, has been the one-on-ones and Pese of Yeshiva, which now, Yeshiva has taken over, been much more proactive, working together with Go Inspire and with Mrs. Katz, Mayor Rosenberg, and Rabbi Yossi. And all the trips that are coming in, that they are very involved in one-on-ones and Pese of Yeshiva. The change has been that Yeshiva is actively involved. We get the names of the rabbis and the students before they come. We try to find out who is a priority, or who has the ability, better chance of staying in Yeshiva. We pair them up based on that. I just called, my secretary has been keeping tracks of what has been going on. She told me that we set up over 1,000 kahusas already. It's been all hands on deck. All the rebbeves have been involved on the one-on-ones in the giving of the shiur. That's something very, very new with the Holy Shiva schools. They're very part of it. I want to give a big Ashakov to Rabbi Schoolmaker, Rabbi Miller, Rabbi Elsent, Bradley, who have been working extremely hard to make it efficient. I think we got one complaint, which is good, because to get no complaints, then you know something really wrong. So really, it was only one thing, one glitch at one point that happened. It was a lot of work.